...which will allow them to complete the roads at that site. We sectioned 245 that action. The council decided to take and reconsider that action. We went to Plum, and at Plum, we decided to note and file my section 245, but to take upon ourselves the appeal filed by NRDC. There was substantial discussion at Plum. We deliberated for over an hour. We discussed the merits of this project, and Plum decided that, yes, in fact, there was significant new information. First and foremost, this EIR, which is over ten years old, did not take into consideration the additional parcels that this project is now undertaking. And with taking those new parcels, it is moving additional soil. And get this, council members, the original EIR only contemplated about 100,000 cubic yards of soil that are moved. Now, under the new plan, it is moving 364,000 cubic yards of soil. Now you tell me, doesn't this community deserve additional environmental review when new information has come out that they're grading and moving additional soil that wasn't contemplated under the original EIR?
Expressing concerns about public safety, District One Councilmember and Chair of Plum, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, Ed Reyes says we need to be careful in how we proceed.
I know I have stated over and over again the notion of open space, but it's just as critical as public safety. And public safety, to me, is paramount in how we impact this area. An area that has very little protections, an area that has evolved in this city in a manner in which it never really was able to take advantage of city controls such as specific plans and community plans that were updated. As a result, projects can come forward and be inconsistent with what exists there today. My question to the staff is, has staff reviewed the new information presented by the attorneys and community groups who have appealed the permits?
Yes.
You have?
Oh, Len Paco, Bureau of Engineering.
I'm sorry, speaking of my...
Len Paco, Bureau of Engineering.
Okay, and what is your assessment after reviewing the material?
Greg Vandergrift, Public Works Engineering. There's no new information that was presented by the fluvial geomorphologists or by the NRDC.
So you're telling me that the level of grading that's occurred or is being proposed does not have any impact?
There are no new significant impacts with the grading that is proposed.
We need to have a standard policy, according to District Twelve Councilmember Greg Smith, who suggests if an environmental impact report is more than seven years old, it needs to be updated.
It's amazing that our staff situation says there's been no change in these decades in the geology, when it changes every day. It may be miniscule, you don't see it, but the geology is changing in this world every single day. It's not a situation that's not changing. So to hear you say that, it's kind of disconcerting, but that is the nature of bureaucracy. bureaucracy is to preserve the status quo and let's keep doing what we're doing. That is their nature. It is our job to look at what we are doing and what the impacts are, and let's say, what are we really doing here? We respect what you say to us, but at the same time, we have to look at it from a point of view, what are we doing to the community? That is not your concern, that is our concern. And that's what Mr. Weezer has brought for us today. I had a similar situation some two and a half, three years ago, and I introduced a motion, and I hope what will come out of this is that we'll revise that motion and move it forward, Mr. Reyes, I think it's in your committee. It says if a EIR and a project is more than seven years old, the nature of the beast is things have changed, and we need to take a new look at it. And for a project that is stale, as I quoted in my motion, that's more than seven years old, that has not been built, we need to then require updates of the EIRs if necessary, traffic plans if necessary, and other things that change in the world.
We have this item. If we can please, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
And joining us now is District Fourteen Councilmember Jose Weezer. Mr. Weezer, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
Thank you for having me.
Before we get into the specifics of the project that was under discussion, tell us a little bit about the Elephant Hills area of Monterey Park. Where is it? What kind of a view does it have?
Well, Elephant Hill is in the northeast part of Los Angeles in a community known as Al Zereno. It is a hilly area, and in fact, it's one of the last remaining open spaces in the northeast part of Los Angeles. We already have very few open spaces. We are reopening Ascot Hills, another area near these hills that will be preserved as a passive park. But Elephant Hill is a very hilly area, a place where last open spaces in northeast Los Angeles, and a lot of people right now kind of view the beautiful view from there and see what a beautiful view it has.
As I recall, the original environmental impact report goes back to the early 90s, before you were on council. What kind of a project is this? Single-family homes, condos, apartments, what?
This is about 24 to 25 luxury homes, lots of large homes that was proposed before I got there. In fact, the environmental impact report was approved in 1993. All that was necessary for this project to move forward, what's called a B permit. The B permits are necessary to build the final roads, the final landscaping, and the final soil that needs to be moved in order to complete the project. But they cannot start without this B permit.
You mentioned the environmental impact report, the EIR that everybody talks about. What's in an EIR? Who conducts them? How's the current one associated with the Monterey Hills project?
Well, an EIR, an environmental impact report, is a report that examines all the environmental impacts that will occur from a project and those impacts on the environment. It doesn't necessarily mean that that could stop the project, but in that report, we'll have mitigation measures that will protect the environment and the local people who live near the project. Now, this report, which was done over 10 years ago, one of the arguments I made, and something that was made quite well by Councilmember Greg Smith, who voted along with me, was that if we have these old reports, how can we now move forward on a project 10 years from when the original environmental impact report was done? The environment has changed. We have new traffic patterns. We have new air quality impacts. And so we wanted to make sure that we have a report that examines the current situation near Elephant Hill.
You mentioned mitigation. It's a word that we hear all the time. What exactly does that mean?
That means, so for example, if you have increased traffic patterns due to a project, the developer would be required to do something to mitigate the number of new vehicles that will pass through or near this project. So they would put up new stop signs, new lights, or encourage public transportation. If, for example, it's going to affect the air in the area, what can they do to perhaps reduce the impact on the air so that the quality of the air is not impacted negatively? So those are typical mitigation issues.
All of this was before council. I think earlier this year, permits to go forward to the project, I thought were denied, weren't they? But now you say the B permits were approved and construction continued. By the way, what are B permits?
B permits are necessary to complete your final project. Any final roadway that's necessary, how do you do the landscaping? These are minor things that you get after you complete the project. Here, the project hasn't started, but they needed the B permits, their final permits, in order to say, we've got everything we need, we're going to start doing the construction. But in fact, in this case, what happened is, when I introduced a motion back in 2006 of November to ask for a supplemental environmental impact report, we said, let's not give the B permits because we have this new environmental review we would like. It then went to Public Works, where the Public Works Commission, without being known to the council, who is the final arbiter in this situation, they decided to issue the B permits, contrary to what the council wanted. So I took that back up into council on an appeal that was filed by the National Resource Defense Council. And in council just this week, we said, wait, stop everything, Public Works Commission, we are not issuing these B permits because the council wants additional environmental review for this project.
I can imagine somebody looking in on this and saying, wait a minute, the Natural Resources Defense Council, what do they have to do with this project in Los Angeles?
Well, they examined the whole situation, and they decided that, in fact, a supplemental environmental impact report will be necessary. And their attorneys determined that, in fact, there was substantial new information, and the city had a discretionary action remaining, which was the issuance of the B permits, such that that would qualify for a supplemental environmental impact report. That is the legal standard necessary under the California Environmental Quality Act, the state legislation which determines when additional environmental review will be necessary. They've been active and involved in looking at anything that protects the environment throughout the city of Los Angeles. I'm just happy that they decided to come on board and look at this along with me. I agree with their position and what they're doing. They agreed with me, and I was happy that they filed the appeal so we could have the proper environmental review, protect the residents in the area, and protect the environment.
As you know, the developer, in this case, the builder, is saying there's really no new information that would impact the project. Of course, there are others who say there is new information. I believe you come down on the sight of new information.
Absolutely. I mean, when an environmental impact report is over 10 years old, things have changed. There are new traffic patterns, new air quality in the area. I strongly believe that when we have an environmental impact report that old, we need to reexamine what exists there. And in fact, there is new information. The original EIR only examined about 50 parcels of soil that needed to be removed. They have since expanded that to 100 parcels. At that time, they said they're going to move 100,000 cubic feet of soil. Now, they're really going to move 300,000 cubic square feet of soil. So the new information is, they have much more soil to remove. What is the impact on the environment? We need to examine that. Secondly, we have an independent hydrologist that has told us that there is a possible stream underneath that property. The original environmental impact report only examined the possibility of runoff, but didn't examine the possibility of a stream. If, in fact, there is a stream there, we need to examine that to ensure that the neighboring properties and the people who live there are protected, and if there is any impact on any environmentally sensitive land, we need to protect that as well. So we need to make sure that that new information is examined and that we put in mitigation measures to protect the environment and the people who live nearby.
When you say a stream underneath, you mean what most people would think of as an aquifer?
Yeah, an aquifer, much more water than originally anticipated. I'm not sure if I would call it a stream at this time, but the hydrologist has told us, an independent hydrologist, mind you, has told us, there's much more water underneath that property than originally anticipated. And in fact, when the developer was moving around some soil, there was a sinkhole. One of their tractors actually flipped into the land. It looks like the land was gobbling up this huge tractor or this soil removal, and that is further evidence that possibly that that area is not as safe as originally anticipated in the original EIR.
Presumably, all this has been now seen or will be seen by the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. Any recommendation from them yet?
Yes, we actually already examined this. We examined this when I put my original motion to ask for these additional environmental review. We examined this when the appeal was filed. We took those issues together. We recommended the Planning, Land Use and Management Committee to the council to support additional environmental review, and that's what we voted on this past week. And I want to make one thing clear, however. If we were to determine that every B permit would need to go through this process, I think that would slow down development in Los Angeles dramatically. We're not saying that. There is case law that determines when a B permit should take this process that we took, and that's when additional discretionary review is being made. And so this was a very unique case. It's not typical, and we're doing the right thing by saying, let's not just close our eyes, allow this to move forward, when in fact, we haven't done our proper environmental review.
So now, apparently, there will be a supplemental environmental impact report. Who pays for that? Who conducts it? And how long would it take?
Well, in fact, the city has ordered that the developer do the additional environmental review. However, the developer has decided to sue the city. They believe that there was no legal grounds to do this. We believe that we are in the right to do this. If, in fact, the additional environmental review were to be conducted, the developer would conduct our review. It takes anywhere from six months to a year to complete. The developer typically pays for that additional environmental review. But I've always contended that if, in fact, there was nothing to hide, if, in fact, the developer believes that it's safe to build on that property, they would have nothing to hide, and they would do the additional environmental review. They'd rather fight the city. This battle has been going on for close to a year now, from them not wanting to do the additional environmental review. I say, if they had nothing to hide, they would have done the environmental review, gotten it over with, and proceeded with their project. I just want to make sure this community is safe, that the environment is safe, and that we're doing everything possible to protect the citizens of the city of Los Angeles.
To be clear, this does not mean the project will be abandoned, though.
No. When we vote to do additional environmental review, all that is asking is, we have some environmental information, we're going to go back out there, walk the land, do some tests, determine if, in fact, there are additional environmental impacts. If there is, we want to make some mitigation recommendations and implement those recommendations, and the project will proceed. It doesn't stop the project. That's why I keep telling the developer, just do the additional environmental review. What are you afraid of?
And I'm sure this is the first time I've ever heard the term "fluvial geomorphologist" mentioned in LA City Council meeting.
You know, I'm not an expert. I'm not a technical expert. I'm an elected official with a public policy background, but I take what the experts say and do my best and use my best judgment to do what's best in the city's interest, in our residents' interest. And in fact, from what I'm seeing, I keep saying, you know, if we're moving 300,000 square feet of soil, that must have some impact on the environment and the local residents. We have to examine that to see if it's safe for us to do that.
District Fourteen Councilmember Jose Weezer, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to be here with all of you.
And again, Mr. Weezer was supported unanimously by his council colleagues with a vote of 13 ayes. Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's council meetings, and listen for the item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the World Wide Web and listen to them in their entirety, using the new video-on-demand feature. Just go to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions on the screen. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 26, 2007. On behalf of Taffey Easton and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Our great city of Los Angeles has a rich and vibrant history, and the Los Angeles City Historical Society makes this history come alive with lectures and special events. Hello, I'm Councilmember Tom Labonge in the Fourth Council District. And I'm a member of the L.A. City Historical Society, and you can be too. To learn more, visit our website at lacityhistory.org, or phone us at 213-891-4600. And I thank you, and let's continue to enjoy and love Los Angeles.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Bring your family to Hollywood Santa Parade, Sunday, November 25, at 5 p.m. Santa will be there to help kick off the holiday season in style. Come early to enjoy all that Hollywood has to offer. Go Metro to Hollywood and Highland. Call 1-866-PARADE-1 for more information.[1101.93]
Good morning, Los Angeles, and happy Halloween. Welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Wednesday, October 31st, 2007. We are here in council chambers, John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 and those who have joined us here in City Council chambers and in Van Nuys as well. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Council members Labonge, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, and Smith. Six of us are here, and it is 10 past the hour. Pursuant, and Ms. Han as well, seven of us. Pursuant to council rules, we should all be in our chairs and present at 10 o'clock. That means that Council members Alarcon, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Wesson are now late. We need you to join us as soon as possible. Councilmembers Weiss, Zine, and Gruel are excused today, so we were expecting 12 members. Again, I want to thank Councilmembers Han, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith for being here on time. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 and also rebroadcast in the evening. We're available online as well through our city's homepage at la-city.org, where there is live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, and you can access archived footage of our past council meetings as well online. Finally, you can always use your telephone and call 213-621-CITY, which is Council Phone, a service of our ITA department, where you can listen along to any of the proceedings of the full council or our committees. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us, please get one of the agendas in the back. Those agendas are also available online at la-city.org. And you can fill out a speaker card if an item has not yet received its public hearing in committee. It will be received here in the full council. And if you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always testify remotely from Van Nuys City Hall. And if there are items that are not on the agenda but under our jurisdiction, you can always speak to us during general public comment. Again, just feel free to fill out a speaker card in the back or in Van Nuys and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms on the side. We now have nine members. We are just awaiting one more member. Thank you to Councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson for being here. We are awaiting Mr. Reyes. We are awaiting Ms. Gruel. Sorry, Ms. Gruel's excused. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer is here now, so we have a quorum. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labonge moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business?
Mr. President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, please.
Our first item is an item noticed for public hearing. It's a finding of public convenience or necessity, and there's a request to continue that matter to Friday, November 2nd.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing item number one till the 2nd of November? Seeing none, so ordered. Next items?
Next items are street lighting district ordinances, and those are also public hearing items, and I believe 12 council members are expected today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold those for Mr. Reyes and Mr. Alarcon's arrival. Next items, please.
Next item is item number eight, and that's a confirmation of a 1911 Act assessment.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the hearing on that and confirm the assessment. If there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That assessment is confirmed. Next items, please.
Next item is item number nine, and there's a applicant with consent to continuance to January 30th, 2008.
Okay, is there any objection from the council to that continuance? Seeing none, that will be continued to the 30th of January 2008. Next item?
And item number 10 is also applicant consents to continuance to February 1st, 2008.
Okay, again, any objections from the council? Seeing none, that will be continued to the 1st of February 2008. Next item?
And number 11 is also an applicant consents continuance to November 9th.
Okay, on this item, Mr. Rosendahl, number 11?
Item 11, which we want to continue, gives us an opportunity, frankly, to get all the parties together to see if we can come to an amicable resolution of it, and we appreciate continuing it until that date.
Great. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing that to the 9th? If not, that will be the order of the council. Next item, please.
Item number 12 is also a public hearing item, and there are cards on that item.
Okay. Ms. Berry on this?
Very much, Mr. President. There was a hearing on this yesterday. I am going to ask that it be sent back to committee again, because we are not done with our discussion. Unless you determine that there is a need to reopen, we are going to send it back and have further discussion and further opportunity for the public to have input and comment.
I believe that has to be to a date certain, as was discussed in committee yesterday.
Yes, Mr. Hotchkiss from the Department of Water and Power. City Attorney is here to give some direction.
And also, this is a notice, public hearing for today pursuant to Prop. 218. Mr. Hotchkiss could clarify.
Good morning, David Hotchkiss, Assistant City Attorney. There's actually two things that are pending. One is the rate ordinance itself, and the other is the public comment component of this under Proposition 218. Under the Government Code, Section 53753, the noticed hearing requires that the public be allowed to have their comments on the date noticed under the 45-day notice provisions. So it would be the recommendation of the City Attorney that while the ordinance itself is appropriate to go back into committee, the public comment should take place today, if at all possible.
Okay, all right. Well, if there's no objection, what we'll do is we'll have the public comment just to inform folks that are here on that item. The committee has not yet taken action on that. That has been continued, so we cannot formally take that up here, and that will be back in committee next week.
Yes, that's correct.
Next week, pending some answers from the department. So we will hold that for comments from the public. Mr. Labonge?
And also, when it does ultimately come back to us, we'll also have public comment as well.
Correct.
Not just this time.
Correct. Okay, without objection, we'll hold that special. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items to which public hearings have been held, items 13 through 20.
Okay, we've already held public hearings. Anybody wishing to reopen any of those? Seeing none, any specials, colleagues? Items 13 through 20. On item 13, we'd like to continue that till the 2nd of November. If there's not an objection, I'd like to move that. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead then, and let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 21 through 30. 10 votes are required for consideration, and item number 21 is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please, let's hold 21 on the desk.
And that would leave before council 22 through 38.
Okay, do we have cards from the public on any of those?
There are cards on 25, 27, 31, 32, and 35.
Okay, we'll call those special for...
And also 28.
And 28. Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. Other specials, colleagues, from these items?
I just want to continue one.
Which one?
30.
30, okay. Mr. Rosendahl, till what date?
November 7th.
Okay, November 7th. On item number 30, any objection? Seeing none, we will go ahead and continue that. I'll call 24 special. Myself, Mr. Smith, any special?
With.
Okay. Any other specials for the rest? We will open and close the public hearings.
No, I don't know.
And Mr. Alarcon would like 38 to be called special, so we will do that for him. All right, if no other specials, let's go ahead on the balance then, and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Mr. Smith?
Ask for a fourth with on number 18 and 20.
Okay, without objection, 18 and 20, fourth with for Mr. Smith. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, of the closed session, items 39, 40, and 41, and there are cards on those as well.
Okay, we'll call those special for closed session and cards.
That would take council back to the public comment.
Okay. Our first person will go to general public comment, but before that, Mr. Labonge is going to do a quick introduction. Mr. Labonge?
President, members, thank you. I know Mr. Smith got to greet this distinguished delegation as well as Mr. Rosendahl, but I ask to rise here for the Pudong District of Shanghai, China, a very special delegation. They're on an ongoing business exchange program here, involved with Calvin Bai of Cal State Los Angeles. We welcome you. We say xie xie. And the most important thing that you see here is this microphone right there, where the public could come and fill out a card and voice their concern. It's a very important process of our council and our government. Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to have you here today, and thank you all very much for gracing us with your presence. With that, we'll go to general public comment, and Michael Hunt is our first speaker. Mr. Hunt here? Not. Matt Doudt will then be our first speaker.
Yeah, Matt Doudt is here, so quick, get the delegation out before anything happens. Now, you got the good guy today. Yesterday, I was political speech, because that's what they're doing to us on the boardwalk. They're saying that political speech has categorical protection. The federal judge said that, and as far as I'm concerned, this is a political speech zone, all the Chinese people. He just said it. It's a political speech zone, so the speech is categorically protected. And yesterday, Mr. President, I was reading. I was reading some speech. The behavior was perfectly acceptable, so I'm going to have to come and defeat your decorum thing now, because obviously, like Belinda Escobosa-Halza from the ACLU came in here, and Bill Rosendahl asked her the question. She said those words are protected, and it's only the behavior. So therefore, your enforcement of this decorum is unconstitutional. But however, I am saying those words down at Venice in your official political speech zone, because I'm running eventually for governor of California, and I'm talking all about the city of Los Angeles outside the Sidewalk Cafe to, you know, that's political speech 101. I don't really want to. I'd rather just have an I-zone out there and do the incense, because the judge said inextricably intertwined is protected. But I don't mind. I'll have political speech, but you really ought to look up the, you know, Jack Pope Joy, Channel 35. He featured me in Week in Review on that one, because that was a big issue in here. And I'm glad Mr. Alarcon is on side now, because I heard that, I watched that yesterday, and he goes, "Oh, this is being broadcast." Ooh.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just for the record, the city council meeting is a limited public forum at which official business takes place. Your conduct yesterday disrupted the meeting. You are warned for your disruption of the meeting, not what you said.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Hunt is our next speaker, and then Jeff Block will be after that.
As of yesterday, I passed out the Boardwalk site plan for the City Attorney's Office, and it had the I-zones, and it said exactly what I said, that it was going to be segregated and that they were going to try and push all African-Americans and all the people to either one side of the Boardwalk. We came up with the numbers. It's actually like 135, it's like 135 I's, nine performers, actual performers, and about 16 political speech people. The point that I'm getting at is that everything that I told you guys regarding this ordinance has come true. I just talked to the mayor, Bill, and he directed, he said that you should be handling the problem. He said that you should be in the courtroom yourself, and he said that you should be hands-on. And today, we're supposed to speak to your guy, what's his name? Norm Collins? Is he here by any chance? Can we get him here so that we can have a meeting, as you promised? But getting, Mr. City Attorney, look here, I earned whatever...
The speaker should be speaking to the council as a whole, not to individual council members.
I mean, if it's being directed to an individual council, and the mayor said that I should be directing it towards him, so I did exactly what the mayor said. Is that a problem?
The speaker should be directing his comments to the council as a whole, not to any individual members of staff or council members.
Okay, well, here's a point, is that the I-zones are in segregated places. Mr. President, you need to probably get involved with this too, like you did with, what's the firefighter's name? You know, it's about time for you to interact in this, so...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Block.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, honorable members of the city council. I address the Energy and Environment Committee about the industrial, economic, and administrative survey for the Department of Water and Power two weeks ago. The IEA survey is a critical document for all decision-makers, and its timely preparation, according to Charter, Section 266A, is the responsibility of the city council, the mayor, and the controller. In light of the proposed rate increases, it's important the request for proposal is prepared with public input and this process be expedited. I would like to pose the following recommendations. The neighborhood councils, excuse me, the neighborhood council input be required as part of the IEA survey. That the Neighborhood Council Oversight Committee be regularly informed of progress in completing the survey. That the Oversight Committee be allowed to provide written input when DWP receives its draft copy for review. That the requests for proposal include Oversight Committee presentations as to the various survey elements. I'm also requesting that there be a focused management and financial audit of the Department of Water and Power IVW Joint Training Institute, as well as a focused management audit and financial audit of the DWP IVW Joint Safety Institute. Both the Joint Training and Joint Safety Institutes are financed with tens of millions of DWP dollars each year. To my knowledge, no audits of these organizations have been made, nor any audits, such audits have been made available to the public. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the letters as well. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Chuck Tenon, and after Mr. Tenon will go out to the valley for Sharon Brewer.
Thank you very much. Before I start, actually, I'd like to place an objection to the approval of the minutes. Mr. President, I've asked several times when you approve the minutes to please name the date of the minutes.
It's on the agenda, so we've just asked people to look. It says right there what the date is, and we've given people instructions how to get the agendas, both here, online, and in person as well.
Okay, my apologies then. I'd also like to say, yesterday, unfortunately, I did not come to the council meeting, but I was at the County Board of Supervisors meeting, where they had a Beatleson hearing regarding the Martin Luther King Hospital closure. I believe it was more like a Beetle Bailey hearing. Unfortunately, it's a terrible situation. We need some people to step up from the city council to add some input, because the people that spoke at the hearing produced numerous statistics and reports regarding the terrible shape of the community as a whole in the area that Martin Luther King Hospital did serve, and now it doesn't serve. And the bad part about it is that the people that ran the hospital into the ground, the County Board of Supervisor leadership, are the same people that are proposing to rescue the hospital. It doesn't make any sense at all. There's some help that needs to be offered from the city of Los Angeles regarding this hospital, because there's no other hospital in the county that's run this way. Although, from what I understand, all of you has started to list like a sinking ship, but hopefully it doesn't produce the same results as MLK. There needs to be a change in the city, the County Board of Supervisors, and not just one or two individuals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Chuck Tenon is our next speaker, and then Sharon Brewer out of Van Nuys will follow that. Good morning.
Good morning, council members, President Garcetti, Chuck Tenon. I want to compliment Herb Wesson and his housing committee that's helped many, many people over this past year with housing issues and problems. He's moved mountains and made the impossible possible. A year ago, I went to Eric Garcetti and brought up an issue about tenants being able to buy their own apartments. He said he liked it, he supported it, and gave me a package. Well, Noel Weiss came up with a plan and gave it to Janice Han. She introduced it, God bless her, on a motion that you, Ed Reyes, and you, Bill Rosendahl, and you, Eric Garcetti, supported. And it will give tenants an opportunity to own their apartment and preserve existing housing. Existing sound buildings from demolition, loss of affordable housing, the displacement of tenants into an unbearable market. It will minimize the housing crisis, another alternative to the runaway loss of housing, and it will lessen the displacement of tenants from losing their home and saving their home. Herb promised he would move this forward. Thank you. Another issue, six months ago, I came to Tom Labonge. Recently, in a recently, daily news, said the city of Los Angeles was losing huge amounts of revenue, and taxpayers were being robbed by people selling used tickets and no ticket monitoring on the red line. I observed that on many occasions, because I take it a lot. You said you'd look into it. Did you? And what action do you recommend so that the city and the taxpayers don't throw away money on people that sell tickets, and there should be more monitoring? And I have a question about asbestos abatement. When developers are demolishing buildings, do they have a right to have people come in with masks and put up signs while people are living in there? Nobody's answered me on that. Nobody's answered me on that.
Thank you, Mr. Tenon. Sharon Brewer in Van Nuys is our next speaker, and then we'll come back here for James Ota.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. I wanted to speak about the telephone users tax and read something that was from the agenda on October 16th, Council File 081100 number 26, that it says that the city clerk reports that adopting the resolution of consolidation will result in a general fund expenditure of $5,100,000 for one measure to reimburse the county of Los Angeles for conducting the election and to pay for the production and distribution of a voter information pamphlet. It also goes and says that the reimbursable cost to the county may increase if the Secretary of State requires additional security or other measures which affect the conduct of the election. This money is being transferred from the reserve fund. And my question to city council is, have you figured out where if this ballot measure doesn't pass, that the city is going to be able to recover the $5.1 million that is being spent on this tax? The other thing is, I went to the budget meeting that the mayor had at City Hall, and they gave us a list of potential departments that could lose funding from the general fund, and I asked the CAO whether or not city council and the mayors were listed, and she said no. The other thing with the cell phone tax, are we being taxed for it now? And if we are being taxed for it, that would mean that disabled and low-income and everybody are being taxed, and they're able to go and pay for it now? And if they're going to be benefiting from the services from the city that this money brings in, then everybody should pay the same, no matter whether they are disabled, low-income, regular, or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Our next speaker here is James Ota, and after that, Daniel Weisman. Good morning.
Morning, President Garcetti and members of the city council. My name is James Ota, Ota Trucking, and I'm with Harbor Truckers for a Sustainable Future. Camp is proposed by Mayor Veragose and his political union friends, and presented to the Harbor Drage Companies by the Ports of Los Angeles Commissioners. The clean air is for everyone and not just for the Harbor Drage Companies. Health issue is everyone's concern. The Harbor Drage Companies and independent truck drivers agree to do their share to help clean the air, with the port's funding of 80% on the replacement of pre-1989 trucks and the retrofits of others starting on October 1st, 2008. The rest of the Harbor trucks to follow our schedule in the coming years. We agree on clean air, but no to concession. We were told that the 16,000 truck drivers of 1,400 companies are disorganized. Drivers are underpaid and lack many benefits. I disagree, because we are able to move more than 37 containers a day, and we are the largest port in the nation, which provides more than 42% of the nation's containers. The independent truck drivers who work for the 1,400 drage companies have choices on how they use their earnings. Companies can provide them with information on where to apply for health insurance and other benefits. The organized groups of independent drivers can create their own companies and compete with the rest of the 1,400 drage companies to show us how to do what they are saying about low wages, health insurance, and other benefits, and that companies provide the new trucks. But don't use the concession as a way to eliminate many of the 16,000 independent truck drivers in the 1,400 drage company, giving our customers and business to a few trucking companies that the unions want to control. Independent truck drivers and Harbor companies just want to work and earn a living. We don't strike or create congestion, but we're to strive for our American dreams of being independent truckers and companies. If any improvements are to accomplish our [inaudible] 7 days, 24 hours, more personnel to operate the equipment, clerks in and the in-and-out gates.
Mr. Ota, if I can ask you to conclude. I'm sorry, we have the clock, so it's two minutes per speaker. That's what that beep was. But if you have anything else you'd like to give one of the sergeant-at-arms, we can make sure that that gets distributed to everybody. But I'm going to have to ask you to conclude. Thank you. Okay. Thanks very much. We appreciate your testimony today. Daniel Weisman is our next speaker, and after that will be Merv Evans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Daniel Weisman. I'm going to use that title for once. I earned it. I've come before you, as I have before, and I will again, to talk about public comment the way it is received, the way it is responded to, the way it is referred, the way it is redressed. The word doctor, sirs and ladies, means teacher, doesn't mean a guy who writes prescriptions. I have written plenty of those. The word doctor means teacher, and I've always taken that word very, very seriously in my life as a physician, and in my activities before you as a public advocate. And I'm about to teach you the four Rs, as I see them, of public comment. The document in front of you can be read in two minutes, I know, because in preparing these public comments for two-minute periods of time, they were cut down, so I wouldn't run over, as I usually do. For the record, I usually run over intentionally, not because I'm so verbose and so disorganized that I can't organize my responses. But I run over in order to point out to you the arbitrary and unnecessary and unproductive character of these limits that you have placed on public comment. You had an incident yesterday, I understand you'll have plenty more. I refer to you the four Rs of public comment again. Redress, respect, response, and referral. Those activities are not done. Respecting who's coming before you, but as I see, my seconds are running short, I want to address redress. Comments come before you nakedly. Naked comments require by the First Amendment of our Constitution that they be redressed. That means a response.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman.
Thank you very much for your response.
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to say anything on that?
I don't think it deserves a response.
Okay. All right. But we, just in terms of folks that do come here, one thing that we did establish in the budget this year is we do have a city clerk position that will be able to follow up on inquiries from constituents. We do try to refer those as often as possible to the correct council member and over to our CLA that's on the side as well. So thank you for those suggestions. Merv Evans is our next speaker.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's outstanding to be with you today. I want to tell you something that I really am impressed with. Chairman Garcetti, you really are doing an outstanding job, even under the most difficult of circumstances. And yes, I do agree and share the concerns of the previous speaker. Anything that you would say in front of criminal court judge, you should be able to say here. But anything you couldn't say over in the courthouse, you shouldn't be able to say here. A number of our children watch this process every night. Many of our young people are assigned by civic instructors to watch city council and observe the process, so there should be respect for the process. Ladies and gentlemen, I would strongly urge you to join me in urging Governor Schwarzenegger, Lieutenant Governor Garamendi, and Assemblyman Solaro for a ballot measure next year for 25 cent on a can of beer for law enforcement and fire resources. And one strike 50 for the crime of arson to death penalty for the crime of arson. This is out of hand. California desperately needs, every city in this state desperately needs more capital for law enforcement and fire resources. There is no room in property tax. There's no room in state income tax. So we only can look at motor fuel, and I don't think the public will agree there, and beer and wine as a tax. I would strongly urge the council to step up your February 5th voter outreach and teach the public the critical need of not allowing this city to go into financial despair. Once again, I want to thank the members of the council for the outstanding leadership you're providing. And Councilman Garci, Chairman, I'd like to thank you for your outstanding leadership again. Merv Evans, your friend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. We have Rudy Schwartzberg as our final speaker on public comment.
Good morning. I'll just make mine's brief. Rudy Schwartz, actually, I'm gonna size my word from Schwartz versus Schwartz. J W V Legion. I've been trying to get a hold of your office for, I don't know, since D-Day, I guess. You know, you don't respond to me. You know, I'm a veteran, you know, I'm a real veteran. I ain't a sunshine patriot. You know, I want to talk vet-to-vet. I got a veteran issue, I got a veteran event coming up, and, you know, you're an officer, you know, in the Navy, and, you know, whatever happened to the open door policy, you know? I'm here, I'm waiting, you know? I'm waiting before your order, and nobody has called me, and I've constantly called you. Is that good enough?
Thank you. Appreciate your comments today. That closes our general public comment for today. We will now return to the items called special. We're holding a number of ordinances on the table here. If we can take those up now that we have 12 members, please.
That would be items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 21.
Okay, if we can take those up together. If nobody wants to just call those special, go ahead and open the roll, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 I's.
Those are approved. And did we take up 21 with that as well?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right. Next item, please.
The next item is item number 12, and that is called special for cards from the public.
Okay. As we discussed, we will have the public hearing on item number 12, though we are not taking any action on this today. We will also have a public hearing when it comes back here to council, so feel free to come back to committee. The Energy and Environment Committee that Ms. Perry chairs will be taking this up next week, and it will also come back, have to come back at a date certain here in city council. In the meantime, I'd like to ask Soledad Garcia if she'd like to come forward as our first speaker. She'll be followed by Umberto Camacho.
I am Soledad Garcia, Chair of the DWP Neighborhood Council Oversight Committee. The Oversight Committee, as you know by now, is composed of 74 duly authorized neighborhood councils who are eligible to enter into the MOU, and that represents 90% of the neighborhood councils. The list you have before you of 66 Oversight Committees represents better than 95% who are against a base rate and pass-through increase. The proposed water rate increase is projected to raise $23 million the first year. $33 million is being held for transfer to the city pending the city's lawsuit with ratepayers. Should the transfer not be allowed, we would recommend that 50% be applied toward the reduction of rates. Because it is not known whether DWP will retain these funds or not, the Oversight Committee recommends that the water increase be for one year only. If the funds are retained by the department, a further increase will be mitigated. In any case, rates can be adjusted accordingly next year. A multi-year increase is not recommended. As with power, we recommend that the ratepayers' money be used for its infrastructure. We further recommend that the rates be postponed for vote for at least one year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work on this. Umberto Camacho is our next speaker. After that is Daniel Viegas.
Buenos dias, honorable members of este consilio. Good morning. My name is Umberto Camacho, and I represent the Pico Union Neighborhood Council. Before I present my objections to the water proposal, let me say that neither I or my colleagues on the Oversight Committee are against higher wages. We welcome higher wages and working conditions, because the most, the higher the wages that we get, the better is for the economy of the city. Having said that, I would like to express to you our concern in the community that if you approve this race for the water and power, you'd be penalizing the poor people to subsidize rich people. The other concern that we have is that you have the utility tax coming up, and if we're going to get hit with an increase on water, increase on sewer services, and another increase on water again, we are not going to support the needed TUT. Thank you very much.
Daniel Viegas is next. After that, we'll go to Sharon Brewer in the Valley.
Good morning. The water, water everywhere, not a drop to drink. That's, that's what we're here about. And how much it's going to cost for that drop of water? According to the Discovery Channel, we looked at this last week or so, they're putting on a, a series where we might be in the beginning of a 10-year drought. We don't know with the scientists whether they're right or not, but it's a possibility. I see Mr. Rosenthal shaking his, yes, that's a possibility. And the other possibility is there's a shortfall, of course, of the, of the budget coming into the, into the city from the Department of Water and Power. It's now in litigation. The Oversight Committee has looked at some of the litigation and recommends that the rate increase be held over for, and looked at once every year. And that way, instead of going for the three-year, possibly look at it this year and look at it again the next year, and look at it again the next year, instead of passing it completely through. We, also, the committee Oversight Committee also recommends, and parallel with Greg Smith's motion to have a Oversight Committee of the Department of Water and Power, and how they are allocating some of their costs and infrastructure. So I thank you very much, and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that will be Arnold Sachs.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. About the DWP rate increase, I'm not sure whether they really need an increase. I think what they need to be focusing on is the conservation of the power and the water. I have my bill in front of me, and for my electricity, it was $1.92 a day. Of course, I don't have air conditioning, but I conserve. The water was 50 cents average cost for water. So my concern is that when, everybody needs to pay equally for the water and the power, because otherwise, there's no incentive to take and conserve the precious power and the water. And I don't find that it's fair that if I'm not using a lot of water, and somebody who's low-income is able to use twice as much water that I am, and I end up paying more for it for the electricity. So everybody needs to take and pay the same for the amount. And again, just justify the rate increase, and probably a temporary thing, like was they spoke about before, of just a one year. But everybody needs to pay the same, and they need to learn to make adjustments for which, what their priority is when it comes to their electricity bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Arnold Sachs is next. After that will be Daniel Weisman.
I hate that.
Good morning again. Thank you very much, council members. The bad news about this rate hike is the timing, how much more beneficial it would have been if they asked for the rate hike before the new contracts they signed with their employees went into effect. Because with the history of the DWP, it always seems to be they have a rate hike for maintaining infrastructure, yet the costs and the expenses that are, come to light, show that the rate hikes don't necessarily affect the infrastructure of the DWP. In a couple, in a, in a future, in the coming future, with the forecast for the weather that's been made for the state, we are going to be facing water shortages, there's a possibility of a drought, the water policies of the state of California regarding the water from the Sacramento Delta. All these things will affect the amount of water being allocated to the DWP, which will, in effect, cause a rate increase to occur also, because not as much water is being used. It seems like if there's too much water being used, there's a rate increase, and if there's not enough water being used, there's a rate increase. We need to get some promises from the DWP. We need to have a schedule of maintenance that is adhered to over a period of time that can be brought before the city council if it's not completed in a scheduled manner, so that if the rate increase is approved, we at least know that the money is being spent, there's a budgeted time. spent, there's a budgeted time allocated for some infrastructure to be repaired, and that there's some definite signs of progress from this department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Weisman is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to Diane Ressis from the Encino Neighborhood Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to comment again on public comment. I look around me, and I see five, six people here before me.
Sir, could you please give us the, could you please address them at its hand?
I am addressing the issue, please. The First Amendment is the issue that's...
And you can come back every single day and tell us about that in general public comment, but if you would, please, comment on number 12, please. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
It's unconstitutional. Now, we'll get to the matter at hand.
Thank you, sir.
The matter at hand is the, is the DWP water rate increase. The water rate increase has been discussed with the Neighborhood Council's Oversight Committee. You've heard their representatives. I'm one of their representatives. It has been opposed by the vast majority of neighborhood councils officially. Their opposition in writing has not appeared on your record. It has not appeared in the council file. It's inappropriate for us to be talking about a 3% increase in water rates, when the real issue, and you discussed it, the chairperson and many of the members of this committee, were at the Environment and Energy Committee yesterday discussing billions of dollars of unfilled needs by the department. Many different issues that far outweigh this little 3% increase that you're being asked to address right now. The timing is inappropriate. You only got this message, you only got this ordinance last week. Can you really tell me that you have had the opportunity to look at it adequately? Can you really tell me that you're sitting here, ready to vote? Can you really tell me that you are listening to the public comment that you are hearing when I see you talking to one another, wandering around the room?
Yes, sir.
And that's what I started with, and it'll end with it. I appreciate it, Tom, and I know, I know there are certain of you who do, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Diane Ressis is our next speaker from the Encino Neighborhood Council. Thank you. After that will be Lydia Grant, and after Ms. Grant will be Matthew Dowd. Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Sir, if we can please respectfully ask you to let others speak now, as it's their turn as well, for the First Amendment. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Diane Rosen. I'm the Chair of the Planning and Land Use Committee of the Encino Neighborhood Council. We voted, our council voted to oppose this rate increase on September the 26th. We also had a discussion in our board, with our board, about the marginal costs that are involved in this rate increase. The Valley, our, the Valley neighborhoods are afraid that, we're afraid that the Valley neighborhoods are going to be unstable because of these, what appear to be 35% increase over three years. We would suggest to you that the marginal costs be put out to the developers, that as new large developments come online, that they be assessed for the portion to produce the new plants, the generators, the aqueducts, whatever it takes to develop and serve these new developments. It is really unfair that our breadbasket, middle-class neighborhoods in the Valley be required to pay the cost to supply these new developments. We are, the Valley is hotter, as everybody knows, the Valley lots are larger, and it takes more to keep them up. The Valley has been the breadbasket, the middle-class, the working-hard neighborhood of the city for years, and just because things didn't go the way we hoped a while ago, issues like this are making the backburner simmer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your comments today. Our next speaker is Lydia Grant. After that will be Matthew Dowd. Good morning.
Good morning. The first thing I would ask is that any of the city leaders, please listen, and I mean listen carefully. I come from Somalenta, Hanga, which supplies 15% of the water, drinking water, to the city of Los Angeles. Water is very important to our community, as is building, and I'm worried that raising the rates is going to be throwing good money after bad. I think that everybody should be working together as a team to develop what the infrastructure needs to be. That serious consideration needs to be taken in to all of it, before money is just thrown out, and I mean thrown out into whatever the projects are going to be. There needs to really be a stop. There needs to be a stop point for everybody to please stop, listen, understand what the problems are, and then start to fix it. I'm the education representative on our council, and I hope that all of you will do your best to be good leaders and show our students that there is good leadership, and that you need to start, understand the problems before you go and fix it. I thank you.
We thank you as well. Matthew Dowd is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you. In the tradition in my political activism, I've got to have a minute on this one, but I wanted to speak to the people at home. Channel 35, it's right, you have to stop, stop wasting water. There is a water crisis, and I'll tell you how to beat this. This is only 3.1%. Just start saving water. You save 10%, and you're going to be up on the bottom line. Unfortunately, we live in a desert here. There is not an infinite water resource for California, just like stopping people smoking cigarettes, put up the price, maybe they'll think about it, because this is going to hit the mayor hard, this one. Ask the LA Times, going to hit the mayor and Rocky Delgado, the city attorney, because their water bills are atrocious, I heard, especially after they get up on the media and talk about saving water. So let's start at the top. The mayor, city attorney, start cutting your water usage by 10%, and that goes for everyone.
Thank you very much. That is our last public comment on this. Again, we will, are we continuing this to a date certain, Ms. Perry? For, do we have a specific date? This is just the public hearing, so we will, we will be setting a date, I guess, as soon as we know when it's coming out of Energy and Environment Committee.
... Monday.
Okay.
Be sometime next week, but we're just trying to find a time where the room is available right now.
Okay, and it's also going to be in Budget and Finance Committee on Monday, so we commend that as well to members of the public. Budget and Finance Committee will take that up at what time? At 1:00 as well. So we thank you, we thank you for the supporting materials that you've given us as well, and we are watching this very closely. We appreciate the comment here in the full council. If we can go to the next item now, Madam Clerk?
The next item, Mr. President, is item number 24, and that was called special by yourself.
Thank you. Okay. We have item number 24. Let's hold that on the desk for a second, and I will have somebody else take the chair here. Ms. Perry, actually, would you mind switching out with me for a second on item 24?
Our first speaker is Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and colleagues. I called this special today because it's kind of a new innovation here in Los Angeles City. Item 24 is a proposed car-sharing pilot program here in Los Angeles. My favorite statistic about traffic in Los Angeles is that the average car has 1.1 passengers in it. Studies have shown that if every car on the road had 1.6 passengers in it, traffic would actually flow the way our roads are designed. In other words, if every other car had just one extra person carpooling in it, that we would be able to take enough cars and enough trips off the road to have traffic be back where it was supposed to be. In my own office, and I know Ms. Gruel's office does this as well, we mandate that every member of our staff either carpool, take transit, walk, or bike at least one day a week to their jobs in city council, and we actually are quantifying on our website how many trips we're taking off the road, how many miles, and how much carbon we're saving as well. But this is in response to a motion I made in 2005 that called for a one-year car-sharing pilot program in Hollywood. But the proposal is now that no more than three areas of the city will be identified in the pilot program, and these three areas will be determined based on where car-sharing companies want to locate vehicles. Car-sharing companies are essentially being able to have membership almost in a rental car company, with cars located around the city, with prioritized parking spaces, and whenever you need a car to make a trip, you're able to book it and use it. When you don't need a car, you don't have to worry about paying for a parking space, you don't have to worry about having a place at your condominium, your house, or your apartment to park another car. But it allows us to take places, such as Hollywood, which is an ideal location to promote car-sharing, because it is already multimodal, with subway, with rapid buses, with neighborhood circulators, and regular MTA buses, and it's a densely populated community with a lot of the things that you need in a single community, all right there together. It's not necessary to have a car to do a lot of things in Hollywood, but for those few trips when a car is needed, car-sharing is a great alternative. I want to thank Alan Willis from Department of Transportation for his help on this. This will have parking spaces that we've had, worked with Jackie Goldberg when she was an Assembly member, to get laws passed that we can actually have on the street, spaces that are reserved for, just as we have now, for carpools and vanpools, for shared cars, and we hope that it will show us a way, moving to the future, of where we can share cars in the city, continue to use them to get around for those rides that transit doesn't serve us on, but at the same time reduce our traffic and relieve our parking problems in Hollywood. And I want to thank Ms. Gruel, who I know is excused today, but she's been great in helping push this forward, and I know Mr. Rosenthal as well, I want to thank him, and I think he's going to say a few words, too. So thank you, and I ask for your I-vote today.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosenthal is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. Indeed, I'm absolutely ecstatic and enthusiastic about this demonstration. There'll be four locations within the city where this pilot will take place. One, of course, I'm pushing for, is in Venice. That will be very effective. In fact, I even have the street I wanted to go on. If any of you've traveled to Washington, DC in the last couple or three years, you will see this project happening there in Washington, DC. It's a fantastic way of having a car there when you need it. It's very successful, it works. You don't have to own a car in some cases anymore to get around if you're part of this project. With those four models demonstrations happening, we will then be in a position, after February, when it goes into place, to actually institute this citywide. I'm extremely excited, enthusiastic. This is another step in getting us out of the gridlock. It's another step in showing that we can partner with the private sector in a very positive way to effect positive social change. So I also, as the President has said, ask for an I-vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. That's all right. Take the compliment. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, and thank you for your advocacy on this as well. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll on item 24. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 25, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item number 25 is next before us. I have a blank card. Was there anybody on item 25 who wanted to come? Mr. Sachs?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for not putting my name on that.
It's okay.
Yeah, this is regarding a, an agreement for concessions, which is a contract, I imagine, at the airport, at Ontario International Airport, that's come before the city council. And I've come before the city council on numerous occasions to find out how the agreement at LAX between the transportation, authorized transportation, and an outside concession, concessionaire was signed, that allows them to use it to collect rent on city property, and none of it goes to the city. If these contracts are reviewed by the city, and this shows, as this agenda item shows that these contracts are reviewed by the city, then in essence, the city allowed a third party to collect fees on city property and keep those fees without any of the money going to the city. That being the situation, that can happen anywhere in the city then. If a public, if a person wants to take control of a piece of city property and lease it to a third party, and I thank you all for hearing, what's to stop them? When is the city going to review the contract that it has at LAX that allows a third party to rent city, to lease city property to an outside concessionaire and not receive anything back for that rental? Please, look into that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment on this item. Any council members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 27, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item 27, Matthew Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on 27. Okay, going to waive that public hearing. There are no other public speaker cards. Any council members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please. Mr. Weisman?
Mr. President, I'd like to reconsider number eight and continue that for two weeks, if possible. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to do it. You'd like me to...
Okay, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and, let's open the roll on reconsideration of eight, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And continue two weeks, you said?
Two weeks.
Okay, we'll make that, that's the 20th then of November. Without objection, we'll continue to then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next, item 28, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, Sharon Brewer in Van Nuys will be our public speaker on item number 28.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, item number 28, special fee waivers. Today we have 20, and 20 with amounts, the total is $55,978.26. On Tuesday, you add 19 total, 12 with amounts, $44,948. Again, with what's been in the paper about, on yesterday's paper, tight spending urged in face of city shortfalls, city council needs to look at these fee waivers come Friday. I'll have the total for October on these events, but again, they need to start looking at who's asking for the events, and if it's really a good event, they should be able to go and get sponsors. Also, I've said before, look at the neighborhood councils who have, a lot of them have over $100,000 that's sitting, waiting to be spent on community projects, and they need to start looking at that. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I don't think there, there are no further cards on this item, so no speakers. Oh, Mr. Matthew Dowd?
Thank you, yes. Talked about these. Thanks, Channel 35, we've got a nice volume on the mic. It looks like an avalanche of fee waivers. A lot of them are good, though. A lot of them are good. Let's not be counting up, you know, how that much they all add up to, it defeats, and it's not getting anywhere. Let's just pick out the ones that really are inappropriate. And a lot of them are being reimbursed, and, but I think some of them, where, you know, we put a nice, warm, fuzzy word on the front of it, and we can kind of kick it through and, you know. But most of them are pretty good. I want to stop wasting too much time on these. Let's kick them through, the community items.
Thank you very much. There's no further speaker cards, no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Uh, next item?
Next item is item 31, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Our speaker on that will be, again, Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yes, thank you. I've been waiting for this one. This is a good one, one of my favorites, but it's only $75,000, which is, it's good, but we're going to be reimbursed that money, too. But this is something that I always say, the earthquake and emergency preparedness fear, this is good community outreach. No, we need to be looking at all the possible scenarios and the, get the emergency services, the police, fire departments. You know, the fact that we're even going to be getting this money back is great. I would have, I wouldn't have even minded just kick the $75,000 straight out of the unappropriated balance.
Thank you very much. No further... No further speaker cards. No speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Next item is item 32, and that was also called special for cards from the public.
Our speaker on this item will be Mr. Matthew Dowd. I'm sorry, sir. Can you come to the mic and convey what you want?
Yes, thank you. Let's hear my dulcet tone. Reject this one. Thank you, I don't want to speak on that.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, no speakers in the queue. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Item 35, call special for cards from the public.
You said item 30?
Five.
All right. Item 35.
I'm sorry, Madam President, it's item 33.
Okay, great. We will go to the San Fernando Valley to hear from Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, on item number 33... Actually, I would have done 32 and 33, but didn't figure I'd have enough time. My concern is that this motion is relative to an application requirement waiver for an annual special event. And the special event is $40,329. And I don't understand why you would take and waive the application requirement. Does that mean that they don't even have to apply for a fee waiver now? Maybe I can get somebody to clarify what this actually means. And that's the only reason I want to talk about it. It kind of upsets me that now they're going to waive an application requirement. And they're doing the special fee waivers also. So, what's left? Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. No speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item 38, and that was called special for Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon?
We want to continue then, ma'am.
Okay.
If we could hold that one on the desk until we... There's some legal requirements in the Subdivision Map Act that may prohibit continuing it past today's meeting. So, if we could hold it on the desk so that we could discuss this?
Okay. All right, we'll hold that on the desk and resolve it before the end of today's meeting. Madam Clerk?
Madam President, item number 35 also... Excuse me, item 33 also had a card.
I...
35, I'm sorry.
35, item 35. Again, Speaker Matthew Dowd.
That's right. You almost had me scratching my head because I could have sworn I had a card on this one. My favorite councilman, favorite district, Tom LaBonge, Griffith Park. I know he's going to do some good things for the city. Takes a long time to get him done, but I think if I keep hammering away, we're probably going to get there. This is one, Mr. City Attorney. $20,000 from the Street Furniture Fund for these lovely Griffith Park maps and brochures. Griffith Park, it's another one of those beautiful Los Angeles landmarks. Had its share of ups and downs recently. People do like to enjoy the environment. Griffith Park, and they want to be able to find their way. Now, all the trails are burnt out. Everything's gone. We need to get these maps, brochures up and running and revitalize the park. Part of my political campaign will be to encourage people to get out of their motor vehicles, get onto bikes, get out into the parks, enjoy the wildlife and the nature. It is a desert out there, but that's the way it is out here, folks. So, I'm in favor of this one. Unanimous vote. My friend, Mr. LaBonge, I think he's going to get some great things up and running in the city. Might even be the mayor one day. So, let's wish him all the best for this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No more... No further cards, Madam Clerk. Would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, speaker cards have been turned in on all the closed session items, 39, 40, and 41. Do you wish to take those up before going into closed session?
Yes, that would be fine. Our speaker on item 39, 40, and 41 is Arnold Sax.
Thank you again. Very quickly, I have questions on each one of these items. And it's really one question for each item. Are these in-house attorneys or outhouse attorneys for 39, 40, and 41? Based on the audit done by... The audit? Based on the audit done about the city attorney's expenses, the cost for hiring outhouse city... Outhouse attorneys is definitely rising. And if we need to have that many attorneys in that from outhouse, what is... What are the in-house attorneys? How are they earning their pay? What is their... What is the reason for having the city attorney's office if the audits are showing that the expenses are always rising? I'd like to know, if these are outhouse attorneys, what's the cost for the litigation for each one of these items that are going to be in closed session that needs to be reported to the public on an ongoing basis? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And each of these cases is outside counsel on those. That will close public comment on these items. And pursuant to California state law, we will now go into executive session, known as also closed session, to discuss legal matters that are before us. If we take any action requiring open session vote as well, we will be sure to do that in open session. So, we respectfully like to ask everybody to clear the chambers, and we will come back into open session after we've dispensed with these legal matters. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're back in open session now. Mr. City Attorney, if you'll walk us through... Or Madam Clerk, if you'll walk us through the votes that require public vote as well.
First item before counsel is item number 38, and that settlement in the case of Robert Poole versus the City of L.A., and that's a workers' comp case. Death benefit is $729,041.58.
Okay, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next item is also a settlement of a workers' comp case, and that's in the case of Marsha Brandon versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of $122,935 plus estimated life pension at a weekly rate of $77.31.
Okay, let's go ahead on that one. Please prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item.
Last case is settlement in the case of Groveson versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of $636,250, and the city attorney has additional items to report.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition, the mayor's directive setting the citywide policy against sexual orientation discrimination will be reissued in revised form, agreed by the parties. The city will also issue a city policy that revises the portion of the current city policy on AIDS addressing employment discrimination. The city's sexual orientation discrimination complaint procedures will be reissued. The city's requirement in recruitment will be revised. For example, certain LGBT organizations will be added to the city's mailing list for job opening notices. There will be new background investigation limitations, and that should do it.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's go ahead on that settlement. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. And on item 38, I think we have settled the issues on that. It's ready for a vote. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 38. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, there is a special one that has been introduced, moved by Councilmember Reyes, seconded by Councilmember Rosendahl, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, on the findings, Mr. City Attorney, pursuant to Rule 23 of the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the findings as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the State of California has notified the city that a resolution is required for the city's acceptance of the Community-Based Transportation Planning Grant Award. The deadline for submission of the resolution and related documents is today. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. On the findings, if nobody wishes to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings of the city attorney. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Pursuant to Council Rule Number 23, we now have this special item number one before us, and Mr. Reyes, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. We were just informed that we need to accept a $249,000 grant from Caltrans to create a master plan for Transit Village in Westlake. There is a real McCarthy Park. The funds will allow us to research, analyze, recruit stakeholders, and provide a community planning process to put together a master plan document that will allow us to establish a strategic strategy. This will allow us to promote pedestrian-friendly environments, promote bicyclists to be able to connect with the rail line, and to assess our shuttles and our bus systems. Ask for your support. There's no impact on the general fund, other than the fact that we'll be getting monies we don't have, and appreciate an high vote.
So you're saying it's a good thing, Mr. Reyes?
It's a good thing.
All right. With that, if nobody else wishes to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll. On Special One, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith without objection. Next order of business, Mr. City Attorney?
Can we have forthwith on the Groveson matter, please?
Absolutely. If there's no objection, we'll send that item forthwith as well. Next order of business, please.
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Grohl requests to be excused Wednesday, November 7th, to arrive at 10:30 for city business. That means council policy.
Okay, she is excused.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, December 12th, to arrive at 12:30 for city business. A motion is required.
I will move Ms. Perry seconds without objection. That excuse will be granted as well.
And that clears the desk.
Any business announcements, folks? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? Do we have any adjourning motions? Yes? If I could please ask everybody in council chambers then to please rise for our adjourning And I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks for adjourning... Oh, you don't have... Oh. Anybody have the adjourning motions? Does anybody else have any other business? Are we done? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is hereby adjourned. We will next be in session this Friday, the 2nd of November. Have a very happy and safe Halloween. 10:00 a.m. in...